Good evening, I would like to call the order. The regular school board meeting of Columbia Heights Public Schools. And the date today is Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, please?
Meyer.
Here.
Landmore.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
Bardell.
Here.
Meyer. I'm sorry, Palmer.
Here, I think.
Ann Lee, here, sorry.
Great, thank you.
You're here twice, Laura.
I know, okay, good.
We know who's important here.
That's right.
Yes, that's right.
All right, our mission statement. This is our custom. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents and lease their potential and develop tools for lifelong success. And the core values in this district are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next on our agenda this evening is agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Do I have a motion for approval of this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Laura, second by John. Any discussion on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? And then motion is carried, thank you. Announcements, August nineteenth, Tuesday, six P.M. is the school board work session here in the community room. August twenty-sixth, Tuesday, seven P.M., regular school board meeting here in the community room. September first, Monday, the district office is closed. September second, Tuesday, first day of school for students. September ninth, Tuesday, seven P.M. is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
Mister Chair, members, there are none.
Thank you. Communication to the board at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the board. The board will listen to brief remarks as clarifying questions and if so desired requests that administration follow up. The board, however, will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone who would like to come before the board? And I think we can safely say no. Next on our agenda is consent agenda, consisting of the minutes of the June tenth and twenty-four school board meetings, personnel report, treasurer's report from May two thousand and fourteen. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Missy, second by John. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion is carried, thank you very much. All right, discussion reports, information items. Report from members of the board. Board members can report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the board of education, which was sometime last year. No, just kidding. Who would like to go first, anybody? Okay, thank you.
Well, I haven't got a lot. I had a state board meeting, also along with Minnesota School Boards Association summer seminar. Prior to that, like I said, we had a meeting. I was voted into be a part of the Legislative Delegate Assembly Committee that will be meeting frequently before December. Also, at MSBA, I attended World's Best Workforce and also the Advocacy One Oh One. I do have the, for the World's Best Workforce, I do have, the slides were so done, I'll give you this so that you can put it in packets and everybody can look at it. If you didn't make it, I think, I do believe Ted was there and John was there, so they have their packets. But if anyone else would like to see information, I also have the whole two thousand and fourteen legislative summary, which goes through a lot of the bills and stuff, so. That is, other than that, I don't think I have anything more. Oh, I met with Superintendent Kelly also.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, I was trying to think of when the last time we met was. I believe we attended that subcommittee for the listening sessions. And we got, I think, some pretty good work done. And I'm hoping that we can bring that to the, for board approvals so that we can get that moving. So, pretty excited about that. So hopefully we can get a good format together. And, and of course, our goal is to be able to be more accessible to the community and have the community, have the community more accessible so that we can, you know, work together better to provide, to provide a better service. And then I also attended a nine sixteen board meeting. We held it at the new Carner Blue Education Center. It, it, some of the highlights from the meeting is one thing that we did was we're actually going to have a school forest there because it backs D and R land. And so we've, have a joint agreement now with Minnesota Department of Resources so that we can do some curriculum out there for the kids that are attending Carner Blue, which is pretty neat. The next day, I went on a tour of Carner Blue and saw all those visions brought together in, in complete three D. It was such, it's such an amazing bit of work. You can really see how the individuals that work with these, these primarily autistic children and some with some other issues, but the people that actually work with them designed this building. And every detail, every detail is to facilitate their education. Even the landscaping plays into part of being, allowing them to transition more smoothly. Because sometimes it can be a very traumatic experience for these children just to go from the bus to the front door of the building. And so they eliminated sightlines with their, their landscaping. It, it's just, it's, it's, you'd have, you'd have to see it. I mean, it looks just like the pictures, but when you're actually in there, it's a warm, inviting place. And I, I just know that it's gonna be, it's just gonna be a wonderful benefit for these students and for the staff, which it, you'd have to, you'd have to see it, you know. I know that they're gonna be putting some videos together. So when, when that comes together, then I'm sure that there'll be something coming out to the district that we can share with the community. But every detail, it is, it's such an amazing place. I mean, the, the sound reduction, the acoustics, to minimize some of the background noise that can, that can disrupt these children's education. The lighting, lots of natural light, no fluorescents because that can also cause some disruption. They used whiteboard paint on the walls instead of smartboards so that the, so that they would minimize the possibility of having to replace these, which I thought was very interesting. So anyway, I can go, I can go on about it for about twenty minutes. Did I hit that? No?
No.
Okay. Okay. So anyway, so I did that the next day. So we had the school board meeting there. And then the next day, we, we had the tours. And the third day, I was actually overjoyed. I was invited to take part of the literacy training camp that was put on by nine sixteen. So that was really interesting. And what revolved around the four blocks of literacy. So I believe we're gonna be bringing something also. We're gonna be talking about that, I think, at a work session as well. So I really look forward to it. It was, it was great fun last week. So, anyway, that's about it for me.
All right, thank you. Lori?
I too was on the, attended the subcommittee on listening sessions. And we, I think we came up with some good recommendations we'll be bringing forth to the board at work study, I think.
Great.
So looking forward to that. And I think that's all I have to report.
All right. Ted?
Yes, I was also at the MSBA Summer Conference. And I was just pulling out my materials, sorry again for interrupting there. One of the things I wanted to, that was really interesting, I went to a session by Brenda Casillas, Commissioner Casillas. And happily, we are no longer the worst state for achievement gap disparity. So we've made substantial progress in that. And we moved up from twenty-second to tenth in the nation in fourth grade reading NAEP test scores. So, great news. But I have, I do also have materials from that. And I also attended the Accountability World's Best Workforce Seminar. And it was focused on how our school districts meeting the statute and how can, how, what are the requirements for reporting the progress that districts are making to Minnesota Department of Education? So that was, I'm sure Superintendent Kelly knows all about that. But it was very informative from a board level as well. And then I also attended the legal seminar on important legal cases that have come down. The, and then the seminar itself, the speaker was focused on strategies for better relationships and greater teamwork, which fits in really well with what we're doing at the board level as well as in the district, so. I also attended WMAP meetings. I just got back from a WMAP board meeting. Happily, WMAP is, is getting stronger financially as well as administratively. Superintendent Lester is doing a great job in getting the, the staff and all the stakeholders aligned, which has been sorely needed there. So I think good progress is being made. Also attended executive committee meeting for, for WMAP, working at the vision of, of WMAP and how WMAP can be better, a better value add to the member districts. Attended the last all-night party celebration meeting of the volunteers. It was a great success and many thanks to everyone who pitched in on that. And then a Chamber of Commerce meeting was at the National Night Out at St. Matthew Church. Talked to a few people about the school district. And probably displaying my Highlander sign still, so, thank you.
All right, thanks. John?
As mentioned, I was part of the subcommittee on the, for the listening sessions. And as Lori mentioned, that'll be, we'll be bringing that to the group for, I guess, a presentation at the next work session, work study, I think is the plan. Okay? I was able to, or asked to and honored to speak briefly at the candidate orientation. I think, thanks for the opportunity for that. I also sat in with the auditors while they were here. And they were asking some questions and I think I passed. But the MSA, MSBA Summer Seminar, same as Missy and Ted, I attended the advocacy, the World's Best Workforce. And I don't remember the name of it, it was the, they were talking about promoting when you have a levy and things that you should look at doing to successfully promote a levy. And I think that's it.
All right, thanks. I, along with Member Palmer, were at the candidate, what, forum?
Orientation.
Orientation, thank you. And I also attended Association of Metropolitan School District meeting that started up again last Friday. Nothing really substantive to report regarding policy or anything, election of officers, organization meeting, things like that. So more to come from AMSD. And I had several meetings with Superintendent Kelly. And that's about it. Superintendent Kelly?
Well, mine's short, but we're very busy. It's the start of the school year for us. And so administration is trying to put the last of the staffing modifications and additions in place. We start this week mailing out the welcome back activities for staff for the beginning of the school year twenty fourteen, fifteen. So I'll put that in my superintendent's update so that you can see what is going on from August twentieth until the students arrive. WMAP had a meeting with, the WMAP superintendents had a meeting with the Minnesota Department of Education staff when, at the superintendent's conference. It was about an hour and a half long, on going over what the old rule is on integration, what the new rule is being proposed, what the differences are between the two, and discussing what implications may be for member districts along the way. Also discussing what that meant when your integration plan was formulated under the old rule but is going to be accountable under the new rule. And then it was suggested at that meeting that a small group or a subgroup of that get together and start putting together a, some kind of a white paper on WMAP and its directions from the standpoint of where we're going with the new rule, what, what, what we might want to do with the schools. And in point of fact, what we want to do if we have to start levying for expenses for facilities. Because when, when we first built them, there was no expenses. And now, just like the rest of our districts, roofs and windows and all of that happens and they don't have that capacity to levy. So there's some real issues out there. And it's my understanding that some of this will be brought to the board itself. But it was at the superintendent's conference and so it was well-attended. And then we also had a member, two members from the rulemaking committee, one from Minneapolis, and then Myron Orfield at present as well, talking about trends and differences because both have been involved with both rules. The rulemaking process will be about an eighteen-month process. And so we may be asked to give testimony along the way. But it will have significant impact both for WMAP, well, I would say for district, integration districts, and for individual districts housed within them. So, so that was very informative. As I, and I also attended the MDE Back to School Superintendent's Conference. And then in July, I took a school law workshop on just some more legal changes that may, that happen for school districts. The administrative team will be together this week for two days doing their staff development and beginning of the year preparations. And the placement center opened. And it's in full swing again. It opened actually August fourth. And so it's been reorganized through, from, we brought in Bonnie Hughes. Those of you that remember Bonnie Hughes, she used to be the Student Services Secretary. And she's coming in to help out because we're always so busy with the crush of things. And so we're trying to make that, the place more effective and efficient. We did have a candidate orientation. And I want to thank all the candidates that showed up and all of the directors that participated and Don Huyam for helping us be, get it all together. And then this summer, AMSD was taking a look at its vision and purpose and mission again. We were doing it with teamwork, not with Dennis Cheeseburger, but with Ms. Goldsmith from there. And that will be brought to the AMSD Board of Directors to be reflected upon and see what they think. But it was a very interesting two days looking at, to see how much we were on mission and where we needed, what directions we needed to maybe make recommendations on. So I want to thank the individual board members that I've had opportunities to either go to lunch with or coffee and conversations. I'd welcome anybody else that would like to do that. The offer is always standing. And I want to thank everyone, the two of you for chair meetings along the way and for individual meetings as well. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you very much. Next up this evening, we're going to have a curriculum cycle and update with Dwayne Burkus, our Director of Teaching and Learning.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, pleased to be here tonight to talk about, to talk about our curriculum review cycle, excuse me. We, in our strategic plan, have identified this as a high priority. In the section A, it is A one. So it's the first one that appears, is that we will commit to the use of articulated, standards-based curriculum. And that has been a commitment over the last four to five years where we have worked very hard on making sure that our curriculum is articulated. And that we do that in a system that we call Atlas. Atlas is an online curriculum mapping system. It's a way for our teachers to be able to make sure that their work that they're doing is not on a binder sitting on somebody's desk that may or not, may or may not be passed on, but that it is using the best of twenty-first century technology of, the power of technology to make it accessible. It is there for all that need to use it. That updates and revisions then are part of it, that the curriculum is alive, that it's not set completely in stone so that no changes can be made really until that document is brought up seven years later. So we'll talk about the difference between revision at the non-review years. But this is one way that we're able to keep it a living document. And then, of course, we really are trying for consistency, that all teachers are teaching to standards, that there is a pacing chart that we by and large are hoping that teachers are going to be able to keep to, that that allows us to look at data, look at assessments, judge where we're at. So there's been a lot of work that's gone on in terms of putting our curriculum into that system and making sure that those curriculum maps all have a certain look to them, certain components to them, and that all of our teachers know how to use them. So for example, in this next week, we'll have our new teachers come. Part of their induction is a session on how do you get into Atlas to work on your curriculum? That's where you'll find it. In addition to that, though, there is this whole continuous work around curriculum development. And our teachers are out there using the curriculum. But we do have a system of taking that curriculum, building a team that takes a look at that curriculum and says, is it working? What do we need to change? Are we aligned to the standards that are set for that grade level? Are we aligned? Does it make sense in terms of what is taught before and after us? What have we learned through our experience? They look at this and they also then look at a broader picture in terms of what does research say works best and what resources are available to us that weren't there the last time that we were looking in-depth at curriculum? They take that, they work closely with teaching and learning, they work closely with usually one principal, but sometimes it's more than that. Sometimes we also have an outside expert that will come in. If it's an area like high school math, usually we're going to have somebody else come in as well who's got that expertise that can help guide us on that process. From there, will be some back and forth with teachers. But really, once we have that in place, then we're going to bring that forward to our administrative team and say, here it is. This is what we've done. What do you think? Usually there's some revisions that are required, there's some back and forth. But at some point, in the past, we would take it then to the CCAT Committee, the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee, and now with the WBWF, that would be the leadership team that would take a look at it. With their approval, we move that then to the superintendent and say, here's what we're looking at. This is what we're proposing. And with, again, the chance to then go back and revise and do more before we then, it is brought with the superintendent's approval to the school board to, again, get that approval, to put that into our system. So that's kind of it in a broad sense. In a more detailed level, you can see on the far left of this that there is year one, two, three, and four, and actually four through seven, that different things happen. Year one, basically, we're establishing our intent. We're putting together a team. We're, if we're working with a particular project through the superintendent, we're getting our charges. But this is where we're getting ready to go. We're looking at some data to see how we're doing. And then in year two is really where the work takes place in earnest and where we're really trying to develop that curriculum, look for, again, the best resources, develop assessments, share the plan out to get feedback. And hopefully, by the end of the school year, we usually are able to have that completed and then be able to present that. If it's all accepted, then we're purchasing materials in year three. Just add one note there. Sometimes, for example, if we're doing a K-12 math adoption, that can be very expensive. And we may not be able to buy resources for K-12 in one single year. That may take multiple years in order to stay within our budget. So it's not always exactly as shown in terms of the total purchase happening in year three. In fact, with our core contents areas, it rarely is the case. But by and large, we are following, though, this system in terms of where we're at in developing the curriculum, the purchasing is where it may be delayed to a certain extent. And then we're looking at implementation. How do we get that implemented? What kind of trainings do we need? What kind of work do we need with both principals and teachers? And once we've done that, we'll be collecting data almost immediately on how that's working. That first year is critical to see that we implement it with some fidelity so that we know whether it worked or not. And then from there, we begin to look at what may need to be revised, what didn't work as well as we thought, what wasn't clear. Those kinds of things are taken care of as we proceed then through the years of using it. So across the top, you can see the years. You can see that, how the, it kind of staggers through in different years, what we're doing at different points. We try to make sure that we're aligned to whatever the latest indications are from MDE and the state legislature in terms of when they are requiring Minnesota to come out with their new standards. So we believe this is matching up to the latest from the Minnesota State Legislature. We just put that out this past spring. So we have this in place. You can see that it's quite full over seven years, how there is a lot of work at every step along the way in multiple areas that in some cases, we have to double up in order to be able to fit everything in. We can't just focus on one thing in order to get everything into a seven-year cycle. So we're hoping, as we come forward now with this next seven-year cycle, that this will line up through the years. Seven years is a long time. There will be places where we will find out something's not working. Or we will find out that the state has come out with a new priority. Or maybe even something within the district that's a high priority. And so there's times when this has to change and there has to be some adjustments. But by and large, we hope when we make these that we're going to be able to stick to this because everybody who's teaching in this cycle deserves a chance to, to have it renewed, to have it looked at and make, that we all make sure that it's of the highest quality. The areas, though, that of course are heavily emphasized and so receive annual scrutiny would be the areas of reading, math, and science. And so that work really never ends. Those are intensive meetings all the time. But the major kinds of changes of directions would be on this cycle. So we'd be looking at how can we improve within what we have in terms of our resources and our plan. The most exciting thing, though, that I have to announce is that we do have with us, he's not able to be here tonight, but we do have our new curriculum coordinator in place. And I shouldn't say new, it's the, really, I think, the first time in, that I know, where we've had somebody with that designation who is going to work specifically with what we just talked about. Tara, if you have not met her, she was the dean at Valley View and is an amazing organizer, an amazing detailed person who knows instruction. She was, before she was a dean, she was one of, I believe, one of the strongest teachers that we had in our district and always has been a leader. So we're very pleased to have her. She's already, just been on the job a couple days and is already having an impact. Her jobs then will be to lead the reviews that we have just talked about, to assist with those teacher teams. She will be leading those teacher teams, communicating with all of us, and really making sure that we have the highest quality curriculum in all of the key areas, things like aligning to standards, the alignment vertically from grade level to grade level, effective resources, cultural relevancy for our very diverse group of students, and then of course, thoroughness, that completeness of the curriculum. So while she can't be here tonight, I know you'll see her often, that she'll be somebody who will be working very closely with me, very closely with Xena Stembek, our curriculum, our staff development coordinator. They're very busy right now getting ready for the first week back. And again, really, I think of all I've told you tonight, this is the part that brings out the smile on my face because we have a true leader of the highest quality capabilities, I believe, in Tara. So that's what I'm bringing forward today. And I believe, just in, in closing, then, that this is an attachment, the curriculum cycle that we showed you to a policy in our board, our board policy. So there will be a recommendation then that we replace the current attachment with this latest one if you approve that this be our with this latest one if you approve that this be our new cycle.
Questions, comments for Dwayne?
Yeah.
Guess what I'm hearing is, so, even though we have this cycle, there's room for a process for updating curriculum when we see, for example, a fantastic resource that, you know, needs to be put in sooner. Is that correct?
Yes. I think we're, you know, we always kind of reserve that right, I guess, to come to the superintendent, to come to you and say, you know, we need to make a change based on either a great resource that wasn't there before that we feel like we could use immediately. I think that's especially true when it comes to the areas of, you know, the critical skills of reading and math, that we would always be on the lookout for what we might be able to do that we're not currently doing. So, those things, that does happen. And it's an annual event that we do have teachers looking at. This summer, we've had teachers working on lots of different areas of curriculum, but always we have teams that are coming in and reviewing what happened in reading and math and what could we do? What could we tweak? What we could, what could we do differently in the year ahead?
I'm thinking with the online resources in particular, that that changes so quickly that if we had to wait seven years, it would, we would get outdated pretty quickly.
Yeah. It, you know, the challenge always is that some of those things are quite expensive. And so, it's not always that, you know, we'll be able to, even though if we've identified it. But it's always a high priority. And so, we're, we're looking for that. We're certainly looking for those pieces also that aren't going to cost us really anything other than the labor of saying, okay, we can revise what we've done and make it stronger. And so, there's lots of teacher work that goes into that through teacher leadership teams in those key areas as well. So, there is that component that really never, never ends. Yeah.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
The only comment I have, it seems like the standards change more often than every seven year. So, I mean, it's, so it has to happen naturally when the standards change. Make sure we comport with that, so.
Yes. That's another thing that can change the whole
Right.
map if we, if we have to change. If MDE says change, we'll have to do it. So, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Dwayne.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Bill. He's going to talk to us about our school board budget for 2014, 2015.
Chair Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Good evening. Tonight, I'm just going to briefly show you your details into your board budget. It's a relatively small portion of the budget, as you know, but it's exactly the same as it was last year at this point. Your board salaries have not changed. There hasn't been any change to the per diem amounts that go out. The second line, the per diem amount, that was a kind of a high point a couple of years ago. So, we've left that number in there. This past year, you actually spent a little bit less than that. And same with the purchase of services, that was a high point. So, overall, last year, you were close to fifteen thousand, I believe, under budget in the board budget. But because, like I always tell you, I don't want to come and tell you we're over budget, we've left those amounts the same. When you look at the out-of-state conference fees, that's, there's enough put into that budget so everyone can go. And that hasn't happened here the last couple of years. Not everyone has gone. So, there has been a little excess in that budget. And your memberships, it's approximately what they go. We haven't had any big increases to them. So, I think, you know, your budget's pretty firm. I expect it to be a little under at the end of the year. And as we have done the last few years, you will get a monthly updated budget with how it's going throughout the fiscal year. Any questions?
Questions? No? Pretty self-explanatory.
Okay.
All right. Now, next on our agenda, Bill's going to explain to us the operating levy renewal change that has recently and very recently been interpreted, or however you want to say it, so.
Yeah. There's, there were some changes. We weren't sure how it was going to affect us. And actually, when you get done, it doesn't affect us a real huge amount, but it does a little bit. As you know, well, first of all, I just wanted, I want to touch on our mission station, uh, mission station. Can't even talk this evening. Our mission statement. And we really are here to create world of opportunity for every learner in our school district. And when we're talking about these levies and the way that we do our revenue funding streams, it really goes back to every student and how we can serve them. And we're talking about tonight, I really want to talk about integrity of the information that you're, you're getting here as a school board. And we want to be very transparent what's happening with the finances here at Columbia Heights. Okay. A year ago, legislature established a local location revenue. It was a new component of general education revenue, and it really broke it down into two different pieces. First of all, there was a board-approved revenue, which gives more control to our local school boards. Then there's a second piece, location equity revenue, which was compensating urban and suburban districts with higher operating costs. Just kind of, the state legislature was recognizing that it costs more to run a school district in the metro area than it does in greater Minnesota. So, what we did, the school board did approve a $300 per pupil unit levy that was a board-approved. The legislature was rolling over $424. We're taking out everybody's operating levy to become permanent education funding. So, any district that did not have that much money in their operating levy, actually, an increase to the revenue for this, for the year that we're just starting. And then, of course, the remainder that we had in our operating levy, which was $308.93, would need to be renewed at the end of our ten-year period. Now, what's happened is, this past year, there wasn't true idea of what the legislature wanted school districts to do when it came to these different pieces of funding. So, what happened was, school district that didn't have any operating levy whatsoever were trying to get the $424 and the $300 board-approved levy. Just bang, they were at, you know, dropping over $700 on their taxpayers. And the legislature said, no, that wasn't our intention at all. So, they rescinded the local equity revenue. Okay. And then came back with an optional location revenue. It's really the same thing. It's just now you can't stack it. And I think the intent was you never could stack it. Okay. So, what's, what's happening, the $424 of the roll, roll is that's the same, just like it was last year. But all the board-approved levies are subject to the rollover of the $424. So, our $300 board-approved levy is actually inside the $424.
Hmm.
Okay. So, we can't stack it on top of each other. So, now, we really only have two parts instead of three parts of our operating levy. So, just try to compare here quickly. As you remember, we had one levy. We generated about three and a half million dollars with that levy. We had put it into three different pieces. We had the board-approved of the $300 per pupil unit, which generated a little over a million dollars. Then, of course, that $424, the location equity revenue, about 1.4. And then, we had the remainder of operating levy, which is going to be one point, a little over $1 million again. So, we expected that the renewal of our operating levy would be approximately a little over a million. We talked about a 1.1 million dollars. So, when we look at it now, I guess, just to point out, too, that it still generated exactly the same dollars. Now, again, we started with one, and what we're going to do is just have the $424 rollover. It's going to generate 1.4 million dollars. And then, our operating levy, instead of 308, it's going to be 608, generating over $2 million, 2.1 million dollars. So, again, the total revenue is the same. It's just going to be in two parts instead of one part. But I think a key point to take away from this is, first of all, the operating levy in combination with the 25, like I just mentioned, in combination with the 24, $424 rollover is to permanent funding, generates the same dollars as we did in the past. So, our revenue stream is the same. The tax impact on property owners has actually decreased. If you remember, our levy last fall was actually a 14% decrease. So, the state of Minnesota is funding a lot more of this levy than they have in the past. And then, again, if our operating levy is not renewed, the shortage now will be 2.1 million instead of 1.1 million. So, that's the risk change for our school district, which really means the $300 board-approved levy that we had really is moot. It really, there really isn't one. It'll just sit here. Remember, it expires after five years. It'll just expire and go away. And it'll just be, we'll just get the $424. Now, I know that's was kind of confusing, but is there any questions?
Yes. Is that going to change our levy question?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll see that. The levy questions are in your packet for later during the board meeting. But instead of the $308.93 on the renewal, it'll be the 608. Ninety-three.
Will it be, still be considered a renewal?
Still a renewal. It's still a renewal of what we have. It doesn't generate any more revenue than we have now. It's exactly the same.
Okay.
Good question.
And Bill, it still does not raise taxes?
And it still not, does not raise taxes, not, not $1.
Okay. That was going to be my question, is does it impact that, an increase at all? The first question that we discussed. And so, it doesn't change?
No, it doesn't. The, the equity piece of both the board-approved and the operating levy is the same percentage. So, as they go back together now, it's 608. It's still the same percentage. So, we get about a third of the money from the state of Minnesota and two-thirds is levied to our property owners. Yeah.
So, it sounds like what, what is actually going to be renewed is the board portion, the board, the $300 board-approved levy in addition to what we were previously going to ask for. Is that correct?
Well, technically, no. The $300 board-approved levy is part of the $424 rollover. So, it's not part of our operating levy at all. It's in the $424 rollover, which turns into permanent funding going forward for every school district in the state of Minnesota. Okay. So, our operating levy is the 1,032 minus the 424 leaves us a $608.93. Okay. So, our renewal is a 608. Again, it does not increase any taxes and it generates the same revenue that we have now.
But before the legislature took action, we were actually levying 424 plus the 300 board-approved levy, correct? And now, we can't do that. So, we have to pass the voters to renew that portion. Is that correct?
Yes. We're going to ask, we're going to ask the voters now to approve a $608 levy instead of a $308 levy.
Yeah.
But the revenue is still the same.
Right.
Yeah. I think, I think it'll be the 308, which we're going to do. And then, the 300, which disappeared within the 424, is now put on top of the levy of 308 to make 608 to make up the difference. So...
The thing, the best way to think about it is, we really don't have a board-approved levy any longer.
Right. And that's what I was trying to say.
It's moved and it's gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I was thinking the same, the same way you were.
And that's why it's revenue, revenue neutral. It's the same amount of money.
Right.
The voter's going to approve it now instead of the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Absolutely.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
I, I do have a question here. Because we did do the board approval for the $300, and now it's part, part of the 424, do we need to do anything at all about that board-approved? I mean, do we need to do anything legally? I mean, could just sit there and it doesn't matter, or?
No.
Should we rescind it, or?
We don't need to rescind it. There was an email that went out from MSBA. There was a few districts where it was affecting, it's because they don't have operating levies now. They had to rescind it in order to get the revenue. We don't have to. It just will expire in four more years. And it's just part of the 404. It just disappears. Like I say, right now, it's moot. It's just, it's gone.
Okay. All right.
All right. Well, at least that's clear.
Yeah.
No, I think, I think you did a good job
Yeah.
explaining what, what's happening and...
We made a lot of phone calls. We talked to a lot of people trying to figure it out. And finally, the last year, it kind of firmed up. I mean, this last week, it firmed up. We know what's going on.
Yeah. The, the emails that we received didn't make things very clear. So, I was like, oh, what are we doing about that? I, I was like, do we have to, you know, to rescind it, or don't we, or what? So, thank you for clearing that up.
We worked directly with our financial advisor and MDE directly to make sure that we had the right information.
Okay. Thank you.
Another mystery of school finance. Another mystery of school finance.
Yeah. Well, you know what? The book's not long enough, apparently.
All right. Well, thanks. Thanks for explaining that to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to our action items. And coincidentally, Bill's up on the next one, too. It's Community Education Adventure Club Mini Adventure Club fees.
As you know, Kristen could not make it tonight, so she apologized for missing the meeting tonight. We talked about this back in June. And we're looking at needing a small increase into the adventure club fees for this next year. And we're looking at 5%. We actually went quite a few years without needing an increase to this. But what's happened here, since the ACA has come into, I guess, fruition, it's here, we have more costs related to our health insurance for this program than we have in the past. And that's what's starting to drive our costs a little bit. So, now, we're just breaking even. We've got to put some increase in so we don't go underneath. We, the way the law is written for community, we can't let this program be subsidized by any levy money from a community. It's got to be self-sustained. So, that's why we need the increase.
All right. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Motion by Laura. Second by Missy. Any discussion on fees for Adventure Club, Mini Adventure Club?
I think it makes sense that we, you know, the participants should help fund the increases.
Yeah. It's really a wonderful program. There's, there's so many things that are offered for the, for the students, you know, in additional activities. And the cost of it is not significant. 5% is not, it's a good idea to keep that self-funding and, and as wonderful as it is. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All's in favor say aye. Aye. Post. That motion is carried. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Morgan Stanley Authorized Persons Resolution, where the board will be asked to approve a resolution to add an authorized person to transact, transfers.
Sorry.
That would be Bill Holmgren.
Hey, the order, my order out of mind. What happened, as you know, Gary Hawn, our accountant, has retired as of June 30th. He has missed greatly. We do have a new accountant in place. She's doing a very good job. I'm very pleased with our hire. Our problem right now is, though, she's not being able to move any money from any of our accounts. So, what, what usually happens is, we have, the accountant moves the money and I, myself, or superintendent will sign off on those. You'll see that both myself and superintendent is, are listed on that. And that's only an emergency situation where we need to move some money and someone else won't be available. So, all this resolution is asking is that these are the three people that have the authority to move money from Morgan Stanley to our banking account here, locally here at Northeast Bank.
I'll move that forward.
Second. Motion by Missy. Second by Ted. Any discussion on this? All right. I'll just read briefly. It's, it's a multi-page document, but it's an Authorized Persons Enabling Resolutions for Corporations to authorize persons named below to be able to move money essentially. And it's Bill Holmgren, Fon, N2, and Kathy L. Kelly.
Yep.
All right?
That's correct.
Any, any further discussion? You can call a roll, please.
Meyer?
Aye.
Lanier?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Bardell?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
The resolution has passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. All right. Next on our agenda is Metro EXU Membership. Board will be asked to approve Metro EXU Membership for 2014, 2015, and that is Dwayne Burkus.
Chair Bardell, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Columbia Heights has been a member of Metro EXU for quite a long time. And I'm here tonight to recommend that we continue that membership. EXU provides us with multiple opportunities for staff development for our teachers as well as our administrators. They provide really the, I believe, some of the best quality staff development to principals in the metro area. They also are... Uh, they also are a resource for low incident special education services. So there's a lot of different ways that this collaborative, this group of districts can, um, I should say this, services that this group can provide to, um, a large group of districts within the metro area is one that I think is beneficial to our district. Uh, one that I believe would be worth, uh, keeping on our list of things for this upcoming school year.
All right, do I have a motion to move that forward? So we'll.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Laura. Any discussion on EXU membership?
Yeah. So you believe this furthers our mission, being part of EXU?
I do. I think, um, in, when you look at just the staff development alone for our principals, it is really their source of, uh, the national level trainings that come in. They're incredibly well-attended by principals from around the metro area because of the high quality. So I think invest, it's a way for us to invest in our leaders. I, I believe also there's services that, uh, for, um, special ed, low incidence pieces that, that we probably would spend more for if we did not participate in EXU. So they provide services to us that's hard to find if we're, we're not members of that organization.
And EXU is a, a cooperative?
It is, yeah. It is, um, I can't tell you how many districts, but I believe it is the vast majority. There may be a few exceptions, but most districts in the metro area are members of EXU.
Okay. Thanks.
916 is too.
Yeah, it's, it's a long list, yeah.
All right, any other comments, questions for Dwayne on EXU membership? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Next on our agenda, Association Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD Membership. Board will be asked to approve AMSD Membership for 2014, 2015. I guess it's me. Um, AMSD, I know, um, is a membership made up of the metropolitan school districts. And it allows the metropolitan school districts to voice their concerns through the Association Metropolitan School Districts to legislature and legislators, um, unique to their special circumstance. And I know Superintendent Kelly served on a number of committees and, and been on, um, has done presentations for Association Metropolitan School Districts. And, and I believe she would say that, uh, it's been a worthwhile endeavor being, uh, a member of AMSD and, and, um, if for nothing else, to have a seat at the table with the other metropolitan school districts.
Well, something that I would add, Chair Bardell, is that it really focuses on policy when the legislative session is not in session and puts on policy conferences. Um, last year, we did have the opportunity to be featured presenters at the Early Learning Conference because of our all-day K programs and the four-year-old programs. But in addition to that, um, for, for our district, which has been continually asking for the funding for kindergarten in the afternoons for our, for our programs, Scott Krunkquist and, um, the association had a platform within, um, that supported that and worked aggressively and had us go down and testify. Another example of that would have been when we were dealing with integration revenue and compensatory aid and saying if we have the same kinds of, um, student populations in our district, and I'm talking specifically about Ridgefield and, um, Brooklyn Center and Columbia Heights, we should be recognized for that. And that was improved as well. So even though we're small within the, um, the organization, I feel like our needs are attended to. And there is a decrease in the fee by $14 this year.
All right, do I have a motion to move that forward? I'll make a motion. Second. Motion by John, second by Scott. Any discussion? Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I'm, thank you that, uh, for informing us how this has directly benefited our district. I think we need to look at these organizations through that lens, so appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It would be nice if we could have Scott come and update us periodically, um, to have him come in. I know he did, uh, has in the past. Um, and I know he has told me he would, but.
Certainly would.
He certainly would. It would just be nice if he could come in and give us an update on the things that they're doing for Columbia Heights.
I think Scott's a ton of wonderful chat.
Scott. Krunkquist.
Yep, I've been reading all the, um, all the updates. We receive, uh, weekly updates from AMSD.
All right, any other comments on AMSD membership? Questions?
I guess I would just say the, the impact of not having this advocacy would exceed the amount of dues we're paying. So it sounds like with the funding we're getting. Is that correct?
I think that's probably true.
That is true.
And the instant resource for all the legislative changes.
That's true, too.
That's, uh, that's, uh.
Well, the, when you go to the AMSD board meetings, um, many times we'll bring our own staff and take notes and then bring it back to the management team or for the principals or to the board because they really do bring in, it's like a staff development tool, um, on a monthly basis.
Yeah. Right, any other comments on AMSD? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is, uh, Membership to the MS, so School Boards Association. And, uh, for, um, Board will be asked to approve the MSBA membership for 2014, 2015. The, and MSBA is one of those fundamental organizations that we've relied on for many, many years. We've been members of MSBA for many, many years, at least as long as I can remember being on the board. And, um, as, as member Landwehr, I think would agree that the cost of membership of this is, um, is worth it just for the policy, um, aspect of it and keeping us updated and draft policies and things like that and interpretation. So, um, again, I, I sort of look at this as, you know, if you're a school district in the state of Minnesota, you probably ought to be a member of the MSO School Boards Association. So, my two sons.
I, I don't think that there's a district that's not.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if there is or not.
Well, the, the training that they have in, um, the yearly, um, meeting, um, is wonderfully informative.
Yeah.
They always bring in wonderful speakers.
On top of that, too. I forgot totally about the training and the, um, workshops they put together, so.
They have had districts that don't, uh, that are not a part of MSBA but have turned around in the last year and rejoined. There have been, yeah.
Well, they do, they do a lot of the groundwork.
They've also helped Columbia Heights in many ways as far as legally, too.
Yeah.
So stepping up to the plate for us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we also, part of the benefit is being able to go to the leadership conference every, every year. They don't charge us for that since we're MSBA members. So that's where we really get to hear what's going on around the state, at least, at least I do. And, and that's very valuable.
Yeah, good point.
I don't like the fact that they are a lobbying organization and they do a lot of lobbying. But as a matter of fact, you know, this book is full of the lobbying efforts that they've undertaken. But the reality is, is we are a government entity and we are affected by what the state does. So we have to have a say in what goes on. Um, um, it's just part of the, the nature of, of being what we are. So I just, I don't, I don't care for that, but I think the, the other services that we receive are, are enough to justify the, the membership fee.
All right. Do I have a motion to move that forward?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Any further discussion on MSBA membership?
So this is, this is including the membership as well as the policy service renewal, correct?
Yes, it is.
Correct, yeah. Right. Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, next up, Operating Levy Renewal Ballot Question Approval. The Board will be asked to approve a res- resolution for an operating levy renewal ballot question. And we have, uh, Bill Holmgren, our Director of Finance and Operations, back up.
Chairman Bardell, members of the school board, Superintendent Kathy Kelly. Um, as you know, we had a quite a lot of discussion over the last few months on, on the questions that we've now brought before you. Um, in June, the Board is asked to go ahead and put these questions together. We worked with our attorney to put together the questions and the, um, resolution that needs to go along with those. Um, those are forwarded to you in your packet, uh, so you can see exactly what the question will say on the ballot. So Scott, I guess I ask you to go ahead and read the resolution.
Okay. Resolution relating to renewing the referendum revenue authorization of the school district in coin election thereon. I shouldn't say get a drink in popcorn, it's a little bit long, but. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 13, state of Minnesota, as follows. One, the Board hereby determines and declares as necessary and expedient for the school district to renew the school district's existing referendum revenue authorization of $608.93 per adjusted pupil, pupil unit, which is scheduled to expire after taxes payable in 2015. As provided by law, the ballot question must abbreviate the term per adjusted per pupil unit as per pupil. The additional revenue will be used to finance school operations and the property tax portion thereof will require an estimated referendum tax rate of approximately 0.086995% of the referendum market value of the school district for taxes payable in 2016, the first year it is to be levied. The proposed referendum revenue authorization would be applicable for 10 years unless otherwise revoked or reduced as provided by law. The question on the approval of this referendum revenue authorization shall be school district question one on the school district ballot at the special election held to approve said authorization. Two, the ballot question specified above shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the school district at a special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, November 4th, 2014. Three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205A, point 111, the precincts and the polling places for the special election, those polling places and precincts are part of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places, places shall be the same as those for the state general election. Four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said special election to be provided to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part and to the Commissioner of Education at least 20, at least 74 days before the date of said election. The notice shall specify the date of said special election and the title and language for each ballot question to be voted on at said special election. Any notice given prior to the date of adoption of this resolution is ratified and confirmed in all respects. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a notice of said special election to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said special election. Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said special election and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on election day. The sample ballot shall not be printed on the same color paper as the official ballot. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notices said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of the election. The notice of election so posted and published shall state each question to be submitted to the voters as set forth in the form ballot below shall include information concerning each, each established precinct and polling place. The clerk is authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of the optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place on election day. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a notice of the election to be mailed by first-class mail to each taxpayer in the school district at least 15, but no more than 30 days prior to the day of the special election. The notice shall contain the required projections and the required statements specified in Minnesota Statutes, Section 126C dot 17 subdivision 9, paragraph B. The clerk is also directed to cause a copy of this notice to be submitted to the Commissioner of Education and to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part at least 15 days prior to the date of the election. Clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials and to take such other actions as may be necessary for the proper conduct of this special election and generally to cooperate with state, city, township, and county election authorities conducting the state general and other elections on that date. The clerk and members of the administration are authorized and directed to take such actions as may be necessary to coordinate this election with those other elections, including entering into agreements or understandings with appropriate municipal and county officials regarding preparation and distribution of ballots, election administration, and cost sharing. Five, the clerk is further also authorized and directed to cooperate with the proper election officials to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form with such changes in form and instructions as may be necessary to accommodate the use of an optical scan voting system. Special election ballot, Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools, November 4th, 2014. Instructions to voters to vote, completely fill in the ovals next to your choice like this. School district question one, renewal of school district referendum revenue authorization. The Board of Independent School District Number 13, Columbia Heights Public Schools, has proposed to renew the school district's existing referendum revenue authorization of $608.93 per pupil, which is scheduled to expire after taxes payable in 2015. The proposed referendum revenue authorization would be applicable for 10 years, beginning with taxes payable in 2016 unless otherwise revoked or reduced as provided by law. Shall, the question is, shall the increase in, in the revenue proposed by the Board of Independent School District Number 13 be approved? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting to extend an existing property tax referendum that is scheduled to expire. Optical scanned ballots must be printed in black ink on white-colored material except that marks to be read by the automatic tabulating equipment may be pr- printed in another color ink. The name of the precinct and machine-readable identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed at the top of the ballot on each side that includes ballot information. Instructions must include an illustration of the proper mark to be used to indicate a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot so the judge's initials are visible when the ballots are enclosed in a secrecy sleeve. Six, individuals designated as judges for the state general election shall act as election judges for this special election at the various polling places and shall conduct said election in the manner described by law. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots cast, and submit the results to the school board for canvass in the manner provided by other school district elections. The election must be canvassed by the school board between the third and 10th day following the election. And that is it.
Do I have a motion to move that forward?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Any questions, discussion on the ballot question?
Of course.
Yeah. Sorry.
Um, the language says that the levy is, um, scheduled to expire. Is that true now that we're adding the additional $300, um, the board-approved portion? Are they, do they expire on the same date?
Again, the, uh, the board-approved levy that we, um, put into motion last year, year ago now, that $300 is not part of this question. It is part of the $424 that's rolled out of our operating levy and becomes permanent for the school district. The $608.93 that's left after the 404, I mean, 424 rollout, that's what our operating levy, that's what our operating levy is going forward, is $608.93. And that's what we're asking the, um, community to renew.
Okay, so it's true that the, the, of, the effect of, and in fact, $608.94 would expire if, if they didn't prove it.
If, if this is not, if it's not renewed, or if we don't do anything, it goes away.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Per pupil, yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that that's, that's the fact.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah?
Um, I, from the way I understood it from the previous presentation, is that, um, is that we're, we're looking at basically a $2 million question, even though it was the same amount of dollars, um, to not renew this levy would be doubly hard on this district.
Yeah, when we talked all spring, we talked about the risk to the school districts was about 1.1 million dollars.
Yeah, and that was kind of scary.
Yeah, and what it is now, it's 2.1 million dollars that we would have to eliminate in funding if, if we don't renew this, um, operating levy.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, I know it's been said more than once, but this, as it reads, it changes nothing for the taxpayers. It does not increase their taxes. This is just, we're just renewing what's out there to be able to continue to operate.
Yeah. All, all our taxpayers right now are paying tax towards a $608.93 operating levy right now. So it just extends it, instead of expiring and going away, it just keeps it the same.
So by passing it, nothing changes? By not passing it, it's a $2 million?
Decrease in funding.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want, I, um, I favor putting this on the ballot. Obviously, we need to ask. Um, part that I don't. ask. Part that I don't necessarily agree with is that I don't necessarily agree to determine and declare that it's necessary and expedient. So I'm going to abstain on, for that reason, because of that portion of the resolution. I think that's up to the voters to determine whether it's necessary and expedient. That's, that's why we're asking. So, so I'll make that comment.
All right. Any other comments?
All right. I guess I would say I'm voting for, for exactly the opposite reason. I think it is necessary and expedient because it's a two million dollars that if it doesn't pass, you know, to me, it's, it is necessary and it is expedient that we take care of it. So, just for the record.
Well, I would hope that everyone in the community, the voters, researches this and gets educated on it so that, so that they know. And that's, that's the whole purpose. That's their decision.
I would agree with John that this is, is necessary, and we also are the ones that are the teachers to, to let them know what this is about. So I, I have to go along with what John says, and I do support this.
I, I would actually have to agree. I like the fact that we're, we're bringing forward this question in a year that will, will typically have higher turnout rather than in an off year. I, I think that that gives more individuals in the community to, to, to have a say in this and not getting it lost in an off year. So I think that it is necessary and expedient to be doing it this time.
Right, yeah.
And also, I want to make the point, the reason we have to bring it forward is because the state law requires we bring this forward through a general, for a general election. So, yeah, so it is necessary.
So you're not going to abstain?
No, I'm still going to abstain. I think it's up to the voters to decide. I, I do want it brought forward because it's state law and we need it, so.
Well, I, I guess just to reiterate, it's not state law that we asked the question. We asked the question to renew the levy. If we don't ask the question, the levy expires.
Right. In order to renew the levy, we have to ask the question. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, through an election, whether it's a general election or a special election in an off election year.
And again, to clarify, if this does not pass, then we make major cuts.
Yeah, two point one million dollars.
Which would affect staff and students.
Yeah, we're probably looking at thirty-two to thirty-three full-time teachers.
Which would raise class sizes, takeaway programs, et cetera, et cetera.
Madam Lee, would you call the roll, please?
Meyer.
Aye.
Landwear.
Abstain.
Larkin.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lee. Aye.
Very good. Resolution has passed.
Thank you.
Thank Bill. All right. Next on our agenda, Capital Project referendum ballot question approval. Bill?
Yeah, this is, this is another ballot question that we've talked, talked about for a long time this spring. We've talked, we've talked in detail about the need for our buildings and the repair items that need to be done to it. All our buildings are over fifty years old that we're using right now, and there's many, many, many things that we need to repair. So we're looking at asking a referendum, a yearly levy for a ten-year period to help pay for those costs and get our, keep our buildings in good shape. We aren't in any situation where we're looking at building any type of a new building. We just want to keep the buildings we have in good condition to be able to move forward for another, you know, I mean, they're about fifty years old. Another thirty, forty years, we should be, get out our buildings, no problem. The other piece, and maybe I'll let Brian talk about that, but is some technology needs that we have here in our district.
And also, the, there's a small component for the security component as well, which we've discussed previously, talked about how we're moving forward with Twenty-First Century Learning, our personalized learning initiative, which is really driving that, and the kind of support and devices and bandwidth and that's required to have that. We talked about, you know, some of those needs of additional development of how parents and students access that information, and that's a component of this, and continuing to enhance and build upon the safety of our buildings, keeping our students' learning environment safe and secure. We know that things have changed in the last ten years, fifteen years, as far as that need, and we need to continue to enhance those things. And a lot of that, a lot of these things that we have now in the security side of, we're paid for with that bond that we passed so many years ago, and now we're sitting on a ten-plus-year-old systems that we need to continue to develop and, again, provide that safe and secure learning environment. So those are the focuses on the technology and security side that we've discussed and presented on several times before.
Yeah. Back in June, the Board asked the administration to go ahead and to put together a question, a second question for the ballot this fall, to ask for a Capital Project levy, which would take care of these needs for the next ten years. I guess-
Would you like me to read it?
Move, move forward with reading of the-
All right.
-resolution.
Popcorn. Resolution relating to approval of Capital Project levy authorization and calling an election thereon. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen, State of Minnesota as follows. One, the Board determines and declares as necessary and expedient for the school district to submit a Capital Project levy authorization to the voters for their approval. The proposed authorization will be in the amount of five point six seven zero percent times the net tax capacity of the school district. The proposed Capital Project levy authorization will raise approximately one million dollars for taxable, taxes payable in two thousand and fifteen, the first year it is to be levied, and would be authorized for ten years. The money raised by the Capital Project levy authorization will be used to cover the following costs. Deferred maintenance projects at various district facilities, including tuck point, repair and placement of casework, windows and doors, track improvements, roof repair and replacement, plumbing repair and replacement, parking and driveway improvements, repair of water damage and siding repair and replacement, and mechanical and signage improvements, and acquisition, installation, replacement, support, and maintenance of software, improved technology, technology systems, networks, and infrastructure, and related training. The Board anticipates that approximately sixty-six zero percent of levy proceeds will be used for deferred maintenance projects, and forty-four zero percent will be used for technology. Program will be commenced prior to November first, two thousand and nineteen, which date is not more than five years from the date of the special election, authorizing the approval of the Cap, Capital Project levy. The estimated cost of the projects to be funded by the proposed Capital Project levy authorization is approximately ten million dollars. The question on the approval of the Capital Project levy authorization shall be School District Question Number Two on the School District ballot at the special election held to approve said authorization. The actions of the administration in consulting with the Minnesota Department of Education causing a proposal to be prepared for submission on behalf of the Board to the Commissioner of Education for the Commissioner's review and comment, and taking such other actions as necessary to comply with the provisions of Minnesota Statute Section one twenty-three B point seven one as amended are hereby ratified and approved in all respects. Actual holding of the special election on School District Ballot Question Two above shall be contingent on the receipt of a positive review and comment from the Commissioner on the projects, including that question. Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the Commissioner's review and comment to be published in the legal newspaper at least twenty, but not more than sixty days before solicitation of bids for a capital project that has received a positive review and comment. Two, the ballot questions specified above shall be submitted to qualified voters of the school district at a special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held in conjunction with the state general election on Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and fourteen. Pursuant to, three, pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section two oh five A point one one, the precincts and the polling places for this special election, those polling places and precincts or part of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The voting hours at those polling places shall be the same as those for the state general election. Four, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said special election to be provided to the county auditor in each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part and to the Commissioner of Education at least seventy-four days before the date of said election. The notice shall specify the date of said special election and the title and language for each ballot question to be voted on at said special election. Any notice given prior to the date of adoption of this resolution is ratified and confirmed in all respects. Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a notice of said special election to be posted at the administrative offices in the school district at least ten days before the date of said special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said special election and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in each polling place on election day. Sample ballots shall not be printed on the same color paper as the official ballot. Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a notice of said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the day of the election. The notice of election so posted and published shall state each question to be submitted to the voters as set forth in the form ballot below and shall include information concerning each established precinct and polling place. Clerk is authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for use of the optical scan voting system to be posted in each polling place on election day. Clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials and take such other actions as may be necessary for the proper conduct of this special election and generally cooperate with the state, city, township, and county election authorities conducting the state general and other elections on that date. The clerk and members of the administration are authorized and directed to take such actions as may be necessary to coordinate this election with those other elections, including entering into agreements or understandings with appropriate municipal or county officials regarding preparation and distribution of ballots, election administration, and cost sharing. Five, clerk is further authorized and directed to cooperate with the proper election officials to cause ballots to be prepared for use at said election in substantially the following form, with such changes in form and instruction as may be necessary to accommodate the use of an optical scan voting system. Now I'm turning to the ballot, which reads, proposed ballot. School District Question Two, approval of School District Capital Project levy authorization. The Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen, Columbia Heights Public Schools, has proposed a Capital Project levy operation in the amount of five point six seven zero percent times the net tax capacity of the school district. The proposed Capital Project levy authorization will raise approximately one million dollars for taxable, for taxes payable in two, twenty fifteen, the first year it is to be levied. The proposed authorization will be applicable for ten years, and the estimated total cost of the projects to be funded over that time period is approximately ten million dollars. The money raised by the proposed authorization will be used to cover the following costs. Deferred maintenance projects at various district facilities, including tuck point, repair and replacement of casework, windows and doors, track improvements, roof repair and replacement, plumbing repair and replacement, parking and driveway improvements, repair of water damage and siding repair and replacement, and mechanical and signage improvements, and acquisition, installation, replacement, support, and maintenance of software, improved technology, technology systems, networks, and infrastructure, and related training. The projects to be funded have received a positive review and comment from the Commissioner of Education. The question is, shall the Capital Project levy authorization proposed by the Board of Independent School District Number Thirteen be approved? By voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. Optical scanned ballots must be printed in black ink on white colored material except that marks to be read by the automatic tabulating equipment may be printed in another color ink. The name of the precinct and machine readable identification must be printed on each ballot. Voting instructions must be printed on the top of the ballot and each side that includes ballot information. The instructions must include an illustration of the proper mark to be used in, to indicate a vote. Lines for initials of at least two election judges must be printed on one side of the ballot so that the judge's initials are visible when the ballots are enclosed in a secrecy sleeve. Six, the individuals designated as judges for the state general election shall act as election judges for this special election at the various polling places and shall conduct said election in the manner described by law. The election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots, cast, and submit the results to the school board for canvass in the manner provided for other school district elections. The election must be canvassed by school board between the third and tenth day following the election. Seven, if the Capital Project levy authorization proposed in School District Question Two is approved, the Capital Project referendum account shall be created as a separate account in the general fund of the school district. All proceeds from the Capital Project levy must be deposited in the Capital Project referendum account. Interest income attributable to the Capital Project referendum account must be credited to the Capital Project referendum account. Money in the Capital Project referendum account may be used only for the cost of the acquisition betterment of approved products, projects, excuse me. The funds in the Capital Project referendum account may be accumulated and not expended, spent until sufficient funds are available, may be accumulated and not expended until additional funds from a bond issued are available, or may be expended on an ongoing basis for approved project costs. Any funds remaining in Capital Project referendum account that are not applied to the payment of the cost of the approved projects before their final completion shall be transferred to the school district's debt redemption fund. And that is it. Do I have a motion to move this forward?
I'll move that forward.
Second.
Motion by Missy, second by Laura. Any discussion on the question number two, Capital Project levy authorization? Yeah?
I just want to clarify that this, the reason we have to go to the voters on this is that we cannot use capital, enough capital funds of our own without their additional approval.
Yes, we don't have enough capital funds generated over this period of time to cover the expenses that we have brought forward to you. If you remember in my presentation earlier that we have, with this levy, we are setting aside five and a half million dollars of our capital dollars to put together with the levy piece to go ahead and get the, the project done that we need to get done over the next ten years.
Right. I just want the public to know that, that our needs exceed the capital funds that we have available to us, and that's why it's necessary to ask them for additional money.
Yep. That is correct.
Any other comments, questions on question number two?
I would just say I support this one because it is, it does say it's necessary to ask for this money, and I, I think we do. We do need to.
Any other comments, questions?
Just, for me, the clarification, the difference, I mean, I know there's a little bit of a different wording here. I guess I'm talking to member Landwear, that the initial one, because of wording, it said that the Board considers it's necessary and expedient, and it says basically the same thing here, and I'm wondering why it's different. I mean, we're in both of them, the Board is saying it's necessary, it's expedient, and we're putting the question to the people to say yes or no. How it's worded, necessary and expedient, so we send it out versus necessary expedient, and we put it out. I just, I don't see the difference. So I support this one, wholeheartedly, as I did the first one, but I consider them both. You know, I, I'm just looking for clarification on one, why it was, one was different than the other to you.
Yeah, to me, the, I mean, the question is, is whether the Board approves moving it forward for consideration, which is what we're saying in the second resolution, versus the first one saying that the Board says this is a necessary thing to, to occur. And I personally think that's up to the people to decide, and that's why I abstain respectfully.
Okay, and I, I think we're splitting hairs because it's necessary and, and expedient, and we are asking them to decide in the first one. So, e- either way, I just, and I appreciate you taking your time to try and explain it. I don't fully understand it, but that's okay. So.
Any other comments, question number two?
Just a clarification. In all these projects, I mean, we did receive a facilities update a couple of years back, and all of these projects were projected as, as, I mean, we, we knew that these were going to be in the works for some time. So I'm glad to know that we have at least five million dollars already to, to at least be able to, to take care of these, and I, I'm supporting this. This is, I think this is a good thing.
Any other comments? Yeah?
Just, I think it's important for the public to understand, touching on the technology piece, that this isn't to let's get a bunch of money and go buy a bunch of laptops. This is infrastructure. It's making sure that we can stay up to date with the technology that's out there. It's the security, it's things like that. It's not a, a bunch of fun money for technology stuff. This is stuff that if we truly want to support our Twenty-First Century Learning, and we want our, our students to be able to, to learn the way we're trying to teach them, or to make that sure that they learn, these are things that are necessary and important for us to be able to provide that opportunity for them.
Yeah, that's correct. And it's, it's about sustainability. So it's a, it's dollars over a period of time so that we can sustain what our initiatives are. I mean, our goal is student achievement, and we work really hard on college and career readiness and, and our pathway in life skills, and, and we want to achieve those things. So this will help sustain and, and move us forward to that.
Okay. Again, I just think it's important people understand that we are, we're working to move forward and, again, walk the walk.
And to add to that, the part I like is it's to move forward on the individualized instruction, which we, is a very powerful thing that we can do through technology. So we're using the, the most powerful techniques that we know of.
And Mr. Chair and members, I'd also like to add to that, that we can't move forward with individual learning if we don't have the bandwidth. And like any other school district, city, county, or state, it's bandwidth, 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 and we have to make sure that we have that space.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work-
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work in explaining this to us for the last several months and making us understand the necessity of this and the other one, to move kids forward in, in learning and staying up with all technology and keeping our buildings and our kids safe. So I appreciate all the hard work and I support this wholeheartedly, both of them.
Yeah, and I also want to say that we, we have a big job ahead of us to educate the public about these issues, so, and, and I hope we do a great job at it. I'm sure we will.
John?
Just kind of building on that, we'd received some information previously on the impact of the homes and things like that. I'm assuming we'll get, you know, updated as, if in fact this passes and we move forward. But have those numbers changed significantly?
No, no, the numbers have not changed and we have put together a lot of information that will be available on the website immediately so if people can go in and see what, you know, they can look at their evaluate, their evaluation of their home and be able to see what it would cost.
Perfect, thanks. Great. Question number two, going once. Any further questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Meyer.
Aye.
Landwear.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Bardell.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lee, aye.
Very good, resolution has passed. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Board topics.
Looking forward to new teacher orientation coming up soon and all the festivities that go along with that.
It's a fun time of year.
I'd actually forgotten earlier that I actually did have a meeting with our superintendent. I forgot to mention that, it was a lovely meeting, so, yeah, and thank you very much for that.
Nice recovery. No, just kidding.
Well, it was a really busy week.
No, I know, I'm, I'm.
I was so excited to talk about Carner Blue, I was just like, please, just talk to me for a while.
You did what I do all the time is forget half the stuff I do.
Yeah, well, you know, and it was only on Monday, too. You thought that it would have just been right there.
Yes, I know.
I mentioned the dessert theater coming up on Thursday for the Park and Rock. It's another murder mystery, but it's also have dessert served in intermission and it's.
Cool.
Have me a great night.
Thanks. All right, any other board topics? All right. Hearing none. We are going to go into closed session. So in accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero-three, the board will meet in closed session for the item on the agenda for the purpose of discussion negotiation strategy with our presenters Karen Keppel, School District Attorney, Lindsey Bennett, Director of Human Resources, Bill Holmberg, Director of Finance and Operations, and of course, the school board members. And we will go into closed session at eight thirty-three P M. All right, we are now opening back up into open session after being in a closed session and the time is nine oh two P M. We are now open. And with that, I will close the meeting at nine oh two point five P M.